All right, I will call the meeting to order. Six eleven. Anybody recording? Of course, everybody could be recording now. I am not seeing any members of the public present. Is that accurate?
No, it's not accurate.
Let me see if I can. Oh, okay, 21 participants, okay. Just not showing. Let me change my screen.
Was that me playing the golf tournament? Was that audio coming from me?
Yes, it was.
I have no idea where that was coming from. I'm sorry. I've been having a little computer problems. I'm on my third reboot. I think I got it fixed.
Well, we can hear you and then we don't get the play by play, so I guess we're okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If we start seeing you swinging, though, we're gonna question what.
That could happen.
First item of business is to set a public hearing date for Master Millwork is. Did you brief us on that, Ken?
Yeah, this is a new building at the Master Millwork site that was approved previously. They're expanding with a new building and they have to go through site plan review again.
Was any mention made to them that they hadn't completed the last site plan?
No.
Can you expand on that a little, George?
I don't believe they ever got a sign off on their site plan for that occupancy. So we can take that up.
Good to know, Mr. Chairman.
We can take that up when they come in front of us. Have you a recommended date for that, Ken?
I think an August date would be fine.
Give you time to get the advertising in and.
If we if we set the advertising for this the 23rd and the 30th, we could have the meeting on the August 24th would be for sure.
All right, that's your recommendation?
August 24th, yes.
All right. Motion to set the public hearing date for site plan review for Master Millwork. August 24th. Who knows, we may be live by then.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made motion made by Mike King, seconded by Richard Swenson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. It was unanimous, so I think we can avoid the roll call. Next is to is this also set a public hearing, Ken, or is this to determine whether this is a major minor minor modification for Bay Point?
This is determining whether or not it's a minor modification.
They're looking for relief from the setback requirements from the.
From the right of way of Bay Point Drive or Kahoon Road. What happens if there's a turnaround in the right of way? At the in the middle of the project. The drive goes through, straight through. So what you have left over is is a is a portion of land in the turnaround of the right of way that could be used for a setback from the roadway. So it's a the idea that you would be approving a and and under the special permit for Bay Point, you can you can adjust the the side and the rear yard and the front yard setbacks as appropriate to the project. So what would be called out here is to have a a point eight foot setback from the side yard or the front yard, which essentially is the side yard of the of the unit on Jettie Court.
Wasn't that cul-de-sac to go away under the final plan?
Under the final plan, it is to go away. It hasn't yet, though.
Can I can I? I have a whole different cut on it, Ken, if I may. On the assessor's maps, it shows Kahoon Road coming southwest and terminating in a cul-de-sac right there to the south of what's what's called proposed dwelling number one. And you can see the cul-de-sac with that circle there. Right?
That's right.
However, there is no cul-de-sac road at all there. The road just continues straight southwest on Bay Point Drive. And the point is, is that proposed building number one, the required setback is there from the current road that is already there. For some reason, our assessor's map show a cul-de-sac there. If you can, if I can share my screen, I'll I can expand a little more on that.
Can you see my screen?
I can. I think the most important thing to show is. All right. This is assessor's map number eight. And the area, this is the cul-de- can people see my arrow?
I see, yep.
All right, so this is part of the golf course. This is Kahoon Road coming in up on Set Ave here. This is the Island Green Hole with the condos around it. And this is Kahoon Road coming down, which at some point, I guess, turns into Bay Point Drive. But you can see this cul-de-sac right here terminates the road. If you go to assessor's map number 10, that cul-de-sac is right here. The land in question on on the map Ken was showing is this area right in here. And you can see that right here. Here's Kahoon Road coming down. The paper cul-de-sac is right here in this area and and this jetty road goes up in here. So this proposed dwelling number one would be right in this area. And the setback they're looking for, they say is their, I mean, their position is it's already there. The problem is the map shows a cul-de-sac out to this point, which isn't there at all. Does that help at all?
That's helpful to me.
So again, the this is assessor's map number eight and and there you see Kahoon Roads is is terminated with a cul-de-sac there that really isn't there.
Now, that part of is that the very end of Kahoon Road?
Yes, it is.
So it is still actually a town lake?
And that's the reason why it hasn't disappeared yet, because it requires town meeting action to abandon any of the change any of the right of ways.
So at this point, it's easier to just change the setback than to try to do away with the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Well, we clearly should do both, but we shouldn't hold up Bay Point. This is just this is just cleaning up a mess on our end, in my opinion.
So is that the feeling of the board, this is a minor modification that can just?
That's my opinion.
Yep, I agree.
So we just.
What was previously considered to be the plan? Was was there supposed to be a cul-de-sac there originally approved by the board? Or was it just supposed to be?
It was supposed to go straight through.
Okay.
That was just leftover.
Yeah, just following what was planned. To get rid of it then.
Was that something that was added when they dead ended Kahoon Road, you think?
I don't know the history of it. Why it showed up.
George, George, why do you say Kahoon Road is dead ended?
Well, Kahoon Road used to go all the way through to the other end of this subdivision and come out.
On Onset Ave.
Yeah, Onset Ave down by the gas station. And it was dead ended and turned over, made part of the country club.
I just I I just drove in from the south end of the country club all the way up past New Developments, all the way up to the to the Island Green and down Kahoon Road, although it goes, there's no dead end there.
No, but it it stops and changes to Bay Point Drive right about where this cul-de-sac is.
Okay.
Kahoon Road used to go all the way through to the gas station. That's why I meant. And I think probably when that was abandoned, they put a cul-de-sac at the end. But I'm just speculating. Anyway. They're going to bring this in as a minor modification to keep their special permit intact? Is that it?
Correct. In a a change in the special permit, modification of the special permit to allow a smaller setback on the side yard.
And they're going to bring that in as as an A and R? No, this wouldn't be an A and R.
No, it's not an A and R. It's a modification of the special permit.
And you could just put everything but the public here.
Yeah, if you want, if you want to, you can take action tonight if you find that it's not a major modification.
So anybody can make a motion that we deem this a minor modification?
So moved.
Was that Richard?
Yes.
Was there a second?
Second.
I think you might. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, we have the public hearing schedules for this evening.
Want to take them all together? Do you want to take them separate? And which one do you want to start with first, if you do?
I make a suggestion that we bundle them all together. I think it's all one project. The issues and the butters are all pretty much the same.
We just have to get a little creative with the vote. I would waive the reading of the advertisement. See if you all the green cards are in place, Ken, and.
Yes.
You good to go?
Yes.
With that, I'd look for a motion to open the public hearing for the three Borrego solar projects.
So moved.
Twenty seven Charge Pond Road, 140 Tahanet and 150 Tahanet. Motion was made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. I take it you're first, Stacy.
Yep, Stacy Minahan with Beals and Thomas. Can you folks all hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you. And I'm here. Zach Farquharz and Dean Smith with Borrego are on the line as well if if there are questions for them as we proceed. So I'll, if it pleases the board, do an overview of the three projects. They are three distinct projects, but I think talking about them together makes a lot of sense because there are a lot of similarities. And if I can share my screen, I can share some of the exhibits that were submitted with the application. So let's see. And I I thought I'd start with 27 Charge since that was listed first. So these are all three large ground mounted solar arrays. Twenty seven Charge Pond Road. Let me see if you can, let me know if you can see this aerial just to provide some site context or locus, rather, USGS map.
I see it.
Okay, excellent. So 27 Charge Pond Road, and I will start off by saying that the addresses are not necessarily intuitive or matching with the assessor's info in terms of the name we use for the project. So we did try and clarify clarify that parenthetically, but 27 Charge Pond Road lies east of Parker Mills Pond. This is Route 28 here and then Charge Pond Road here. The Y is about here. Those baseball fields are located here. So it is a five megawatt AC, 12.2 megawatt DC solar array and energy storage system on a 44 acre site. There's a 39 acre fenced area that will have a wildlife gap similar to the projects that you've seen before from Borrego. And these three are very in keeping with those past solar projects that you've reviewed. We did include a fairly detailed narrative addressing compliance with the various criteria of the zoning bylaw. So I was not planning on reviewing that in detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We did also request for, generally, I would classify them as administrative waivers related to the required size of the photographs showing the property lines and dimensions, since these projects are in acreage land and it's quite extensive. The plan scales because of the size of the projects, we tried to pick scales that made them able to be understood as you're looking at the plans. And then the location of the individual trees. So those are the the waivers that are requested for these three projects. For 27 Charge, I guess, I'm happy to pull up the plans if it's helpful once, once we get into questions with the board. But for now, this is an overview of the site. So here's Parker Mills Pond, Charge Pond Road, and then the baseball fields are here for context. The interconnection for this site will occur at the road. There will be ring roads around the array in accordance with the Wareham Fire Department requirements. We have designed a stormwater management system to mitigate the change in cover type, and we did include some details as to that on the plan so that it was readily legible at the at the scales we were showing. There are several wetland resource areas on the site, and we have filed with the Conservation Commission as well. Work is limited to the buffer zone. We've maintained the 50-foot no activity zone that that Wareham imposes, and we've also maintained a 100-foot setback from potential vernal pools that we noted on site. The solar arrays themselves, the panels are nearly entirely out of the buffer zone and the equipment areas are out of the buffer zone. These are large projects, but we've minimized clearing to the extent practicable beyond the panel areas. As you can see here, the limit of clearing is associated with accommodating stormwater facilities largely, and then there is also that kind of safety fall zone as well as shading setback that's needed for the solar panels to function properly. On this particular site, there is a two acre area across the whole site that's outside of the fence and outside of stormwater areas that will be left with stumps in place and allowed to revegetate. That's 27 Charge Pond in a nutshell. I don't know, would you like to answer question, ask questions about this one, or should I just go on and describe all three and then open it up to questions?
I'm good with you going over doing an overview with all three.
Okay. So 140 Tahanet is next. 140 and 150 are more proximate to each other. So 140 Tahanet is located south of the easement here. This is, if you can see my cursor, I don't know, but down to the the south is where the 27 Charge Pond site that I just reviewed is located. 140 and then 150, which I'll talk about in a moment, 150 is located to the north. And then the Tahanet East project that the board previously approved is located here. So 40 and 150 Tahanet are located southwest of the existing Tahanet East project. With regard to 140, all of the information that I just went through is the same. The difference on this site is Makepeace is planning to utilize some of the material that comes out of the ground for its operations. I'm noticing I have a glare from my window. I can get rid of it. And so there's a bit more grading on this site than the other two sites so that we can accommodate that that.
Can you give me some more color on that? You're going to do what with materials and in what way?
So as with some of the past projects, you may recall, Tahanet East was one that jumps to mind in particular. We kind of doubled up on the use and proposed it for solar, but then at the same time, since there was going to be disturbance, Makepeace planned on extracting some of the material from that site as well. So similar to that, that's the plan for this southerly 140 site.
And that material will be going where?
I can confirm with Makepeace, my understanding is it's part of their kind of ongoing operations.
Is that the topsoil to be reused?
No, this would be sand extraction, I believe, at this site.
That's what that's what I was trying to get confirmation. You're gonna take the sand and go use it in the the bogs that still exist?
Correct. And so that's why you see a bit more grading on this site. There's also a bit more grading on this site because we wanted to maintain watersheds too. There are some wetlands and a potential vernal pool in particular on this property. So 140.
I'm sorry. I I do not look at this map and and recognize that there's more grading. Could you just explain that to me? This is from my own education. How do how do I look at this and say there's more grading going on here?
Sure, and I'm talking comparatively to 27 Charge Pond to some extent, but also to 150. So let me just pull up the 150 plan quickly so that you can have a comparison.
I'm sorry, I'm coming up to speed on some of this.
No, that's perfectly fine. So you can see for 150, there is still grading proposed.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I don't see that. How do how do you? How do I know that?
So these contours here? Here, let me. So these contours that cut across the darker contours, so existing contours are shown in this gray color. And then proposed contours are shown in the darker black color.
Oh, I see.
So you can see that the number of contours, we're kind of creating some slopes and excavation areas heading this way versus.
If I see a lot of dark black lines, that means that's new contouring?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. I get it now.
Yep. This project is also a five megawatt AC project, 21 megawatts DC. The site is 76 and a half acres. There's overall, so the limit of clearing is 76 and a half acres. The your, the fenced area is 66 acres. The interconnection for this site will occur at the right of way to the north. And similarly, the interconnection for 150 will also occur in that right of way. For this project, again, it's limited to the buffer zone and the clearing's been minimized as much as possible, given the proposed solar panels. I think there's nothing else different about this project that I'd want to highlight. And then the third in the suite is 150 Tahanet, which as I mentioned, is located north. So here's the 140 Tahanet site. Here's the 150 Tahanet site, and then the previously approved Tahanet East is located here. The 150 plans are here as well, if you had any specific questions. For 150, I don't think there was anything in particular difference, five megawatt AC, similar to the others, 20 megawatt DC ring roads. One thing about 140, the southerly array located here that I should mention is so for all three of these, we have ring roads proposed as required by the Wareham Fire Department. On 150, there are some existing access roads in addition to Tahanet Road. So Tahanet Road runs along the western edge. There are some existing roads that we are proposing to reuse as well, and those are indicated on the site plans that were submitted. So for 140, the southerly array, we're reusing some of the existing access roads that are present in the field.
Is this location, Stacy, is this this on the opposite side of Tahanet Pond from that small neighborhood off of Farm to Market?
Yes.
So you're planning on deforesting that side of the pond in order to make way for this?
Well, there'll be a setback from the pond here. And that neighborhood that you're referring to, I believe, is here. So for 140, it's over 1,000 feet to the nearest home, which is actually located on this peninsula here on the same side of the pond. And then it's even farther across to this neighborhood. And for 150, it's 1,240 feet from the limit of clearing to the nearest home across the pond.
How does that? How does that translate into how many feet off of the water's edge?
So we.
But you're talking across the pond. You're gonna gobble up a bunch of that just in water.
Yep, so we are about a minimum of give or take 100 feet off of Tahanet Pond. I I think we're out of the buffer zone, if I remember correctly, to Tahanet Pond from this southerly array. So I think you're a minimum 100 feet away. And then the northerly array were, you know, even farther away. And I can certainly get those numbers and provide them in terms of the forested area that buffer off of the pond that will remain. And then that's in addition to any, you know, buffer here. And so I did.
The buffer is 100 minimum, isn't it, for the wetland?
Yep, 100 off the waters, off the wet.
There's no extra buffer. It's just bare minimum buffer.
Correct. And so when when you're proposing work within 100 feet of a wetland, you need to file with the Conservation Commission, which we've done. Because we do have some work within 100 feet on all three of these projects.
It's such a, it's such a large project. Why? Why would you feel the need to encroach on the water's edge?
So I don't know that I would characterize it as encroaching on the water's edge. Apologies that this exhibit is kind of glitching. And certainly, I think Zach can probably weigh in more on the amount of megawatts that need to be achieved for the projects to be successful. But if you can see this exhibit that is slowly loading, this is the northerly site, which granted is farther from the pond edge. I'll open the other one in a moment. So the closest home is here. There's a buffer along the pond and then a significant buffer here as well. So yes, some of it is across the water, but that's fairly significant. And then 140, the southerly one. Again, apologies that these are a bit slow to load with the aerial.
No, but these are, these are very helpful. I'd like to see 27 as well.
Yep, I can open up 27. 27, we had actually submitted with the application because that one is more proximate to areas and we had taken a look at it. These two sites where they're so distant from the nearby areas, we had prepared them in case there were questions, but hadn't had them for the application. Again, and like I said, I can certainly provide the takeoff, but there's a fairly significant wooded buffer still between the pond and Tahanet Road. And then also from Tahanet Road to the panels. The panels are not right up on Tahanet Road. The limit of clearing will be on Tahanet Road in some areas where there are wetlands we bump out. And then this is, I think, that Red Pine Lane neighborhood that you're referring to. There's a significant buffer along there.
I know the neighborhood well. I don't know if I would consider or characterize the wooded land between Tahanet Road and the water's edge is significant.
Okay.
I know, I've driven down that road many times during the Cranberry Festival and whatnot. And as you're traveling that road, you have a very clean, clear, light sign of light vision to those homes. So you're 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 characterizing it as a significant buffer. I would have to respectfully disagree. Those people are gonna have a bird's eye view of what you're proposing.
Michael, are you referring to the to the the solar arrays on the north side, 150?
The the uppermost, yes. The uppermost left, looking at the at the screen you're looking at now.
Here.
So people over here in Red Pine Lane?
Correct.
Looking across the pond?
Well, you've got you've got the folks on Red Pine. And then granted, there's a little bit of relief for. And then granted, there's a little bit of relief for a couple of the homes that are the view was going to be blocked by the small island between the pond. And then coming down further down toward the box mill. The the last couple of houses are going to have a nice, clean view of the array.
Really?
Oh. You know, luckily, I'm not there anymore, so I don't have any conflict. But I I lived at 22 Red Pine. And and I know that site very well. And, you know, during the busy season, when make pieces trucks running up and down that road. I could sit on my back porch and have a perfectly clear view of that dump truck running down that road. So what makes a solar array any more invisible than a dump truck? And you're talking about grading. In what direction are you grading? Are you grading up the hill so that it's even going to be more visible for those people? Or is it? Or is it graded flat so that it kind of tries to disappear behind the tree line?
It's generally excavated and then kind of worked into the landscape. So I think if anything, it would help. But Mike, just so that I'm clear, are you talking about more southerly, kind of off of Warfarin to Market and Tohannet Road meet? Looking obliquely across the pond like this? I don't know if you can see my arrow.
Where your where your lines are that show how many feet? You've got 15, 16, and 1500?
Yeah.
That you could, I could read the name off the side of a dump truck running down Tohannet Pond Road.
Okay, so you are in this northern part here is what you're talking about, just so that we can take a look at it. Discuss further at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
And, you know, not for nothing, like I said, I don't live there anymore. But the people that own those houses bought houses on a lake for the setting, which this is going to diminish dramatically. I would, you know, I don't have anything I get. I don't have anything against solar. I like solar. I've had it on my last two homes. But I don't understand, aside from the monetary gain, why it has to be pushed right to the outer limit of the boundary of the property. Now, it would be nice if we attempted to be a good neighbor to the people that are already living there. Instead of saying, yeah, you paid a lot of money for that house and, you know, the pond's kind of okay. But we're coming in and and we're going to use every square inch we have available to us and make sure we get that last panel up there, regardless of what it does to your your environment.
Even for the drive through? Like, that's that's going to be deforested forever, basically.
Right. And why do we have to? We've got so many open acres of of land here in this town, most of it owned by by AD Makepeace. Why do we have to put a solar array someplace where we have to cut down a ton of trees?
Hi, this is Zach Parkus with Brago. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Awesome. Good to good to talk to everyone this evening. So we, I guess, when we had looked at the the layout of the array here, we had given probably a lot more credence to the the untouched forest land between the pond and Tohannet Road. So why don't you let us take take pen to our plans for the next meeting? And see if we can, I think, somebody used the term be a good neighbor, see if we can we can improve the setback off the road and the forested area and give you guys spend a little bit more time on kind of the view shed across the haunted road. I think we walked into this meeting quite confident that we could say that no one was going to see it or smell it or hear it. And so if that's being challenged, let us let us take another look, especially especially considering you've lived in that area. So we'll take that action item back with us for the next meeting.
Okay, that's that's all right with me.
Yeah, that's great. This is Richard. I think Mike said it very well. I am a big advocate of solar and I know that I've read through the site plans. And I felt that you've that you have met the spirit of most of the requirements for this for putting solar in our town. But as Michael said, my my key thing is is that I don't just want, I don't want to disrupt the people that are that live in that area. I want them to have what they bought when they bought it. I'm a little surprised that I'm glad, very glad I know where Michael's house is. And I'm very glad he's been able to expand on this. If we can put stuff like this in that you can't hear it, see it or smell it, then that's great. But if not, then we're going to have to really dive in and understand exactly what the impact is before I'm ready to say okay.
Sure.
That's well said. As I said, walking into this meeting, you know, Brago's done a ton of work in Wareham, obviously, all with make peace. And speaking for make peace also, the the expectation here was this is going to be a zero impact to anyone's view sheds or property values or anything like that. And we'll absolutely take another look if we're a little a little aggressive on that thinking. So thank you for bringing it up. And you'll see some improvement for the next for the next meeting.
Well, the other issue I have that I've had with all the solar projects is the justification for cutting down what, 80,000 or 80 acres of mature forest? And replacing them with solar panels. I don't see that as an ecological positive. Unless somebody show me some some numbers to that effect, which I've yet to see. And it's a plus in the end.
What what is the mitigation for our for oxygen purposes?
Sure. So not, I mean, big picture here, not every project's perfect. It's really hard to find a perfect development project, be it solar, residential, commercial, whatever. So I I hear you. When I look at this project, that's certainly certainly the the biggest of the on the list of cons that I could come up with. The I will put together the math for you, but it's something like 400 to one when it comes to carbon sequestration from trees versus the amount of brown power, brown fuel that's kept out of the atmosphere. So I do, I will say the math is not even close.
Yeah. But I If I could interject this, that's a wonderful statement, you know, you you're going to keep the carbon footprint down to a minimum by putting panels and and versus what you're going to lose from the trees. But the reality of it is, is everybody in the surrounding area is 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 going to enjoy that carbon reduction. But we're the ones paying the price in our town. We're the ones that are losing the forest to to supply the opportunity to reduce our carbon footprint. Kind of a big price to ask us to pay.
Is there a way?
Thousands of acres of open space in this town. It blows my mind if you got to cut trees down.
Are there any are there any abandoned bogs that make peace has that might fit this project better than clear cutting?
Over the years, we've been working with make peace for almost a decade now. And we go through their real estate holdings and discuss their plans from real estate, commercial development to agriculture to this type of development. And we worked through with them on one of the most appropriate sites from from kind of as many stakeholders as we could think of. And as I said, the tree clearing is is the challenging part to get over. I was responding directly to the mathematics of it. But to answer your question, no, there is no abandoned bog or area that's that's more suitable for these projects from make pieces perspective. And I know it's a lot. It's a lot of acres. These are big projects.
That's their perspective, but we don't get the forest back. We can't get the forest back.
Zach, I can jump in too, to provide some broader context that might be helpful. I think obviously, no, you know, you don't have the forest back as long as the solar arrays are are there. I think in long term, you know, in terms of future and the fact that it is still able to provide some level of meadow habitat is a positive. Obviously, as Zach mentioned, the tree clearing is is not necessarily holistically positive. But I think what's notable for make peace in particular, when it comes to solar projects in Wareham, is that they have actually put a hugely significant amount of acreage into conservation restrictions adjacent to Miles Standish State Forest. So, you know, they haven't really just done forest clearing. The other thing I think to start off by saying is that of the 6,000 acres of these particular make peace land holdings, which are in Wareham, Carver, and Plymouth. You know, it's largely forested or natural areas or working landscape. Even though I fully recognize that these individual projects are large in terms of the acreage of land clearing, you know, the overall 6,000 acres that make peace has is largely not cleared. The only other solar projects on make peace land that I could think of that entailed clearing just for the solar was Charlotte in Wareham was Charlotte Furnace Solar and Tohanna East Solar. Tohanna East, again, they did the double, you know, also extracting sand while they were there. But in terms of what make pieces set aside for conservation within these land holdings, and granted, this is in Plymouth because it is adjacent to Miles Standish. They've set aside just under 437 acres of land permanently protected. In Plymouth, at the Red Brook parcel, they've set aside nearly 560 acres. And then perhaps what you'd be most interested in in Wareham at the Maple Springs parcel is they've set aside almost 831 acres of conservation land. So they have set aside a very significant amount of conservation land over the years.
Can you Alan Slaven, did you have a question?
Can you repeat?
That was my wife asking about what conservation lands.
I'm sorry?
That was Sandy asking about what lands were in conservation. I think Maple Park is all has to do with the wells and everything else. That might be a different issue anyways.
Yes. I know that's set as conservation restriction and at Maple Springs, it's 800, 831 acres. At Red Brook, it's 560. I'm rounding to the nearest acre, 560 acres and within Plymouth, but very adjacent to this particular area. Let me see if it shows up on any of the USGS. No, I don't think so. I think we're a little bit too.
Could you show us this view of the Charge Pond Road project?
Which view?
The that aerial view that you
Oh, sure. Um, and and the team I just took close loop is 437 acres. It's in the northeast portion of these land holdings, so just north of the Wareham Town Line adjacent to the Miles Standish State Forest. So this is that site context for 27 Charge. So there is a spot along Charge Pond Road here where there's a home and it's about 90 feet to the limit of clearing. But again, you can see the the panels, the limit of clearing is right along the road here. But the panels are offset significantly. And and this area will stay
Yeah.
Will stay forested. In this location, it's 330 feet to a home to the solar panels. And then the next closest is across the pond, 650 feet from this home to the limit of clearing.
And the odd shape is for setback, wetland setback?
Wetlands, yes. Yep. So similarly, on all of the projects, we've maintained the 50 foot no activity zone. And then where there were potential vernal pools, we maintained 100 feet off of them.
Again, with this project, we're looking at some some fairly significant forest clearing in order to put this in.
This this project is three huge projects.
In all of them, they're taking down a ton of trees.
It's a it's a huge amount of change for the town.
Stacy, are the are the three, this particular view, are though, I I can't find those in the site plan document. I know it's huge. Are they in there?
So the one for 27 Charge Pond is in the site plan application. It would be towards the back in section six, I think. Yeah. So in section six, the last section of the application, it's in 27 Charge. We hadn't done it or included it for 140 or 150 until we were heading into this meeting because we had thought that there was no issue over on those sites. Obviously, as Zach said, we're going to take another look. So those two are not in the application packages.
This is a public hearing. If there is someone, anyone that wishes to comment, I would just, it's a little difficult to control under the Zoom meeting, but if you'd make yourself known, we'll try to keep it orderly. Let me see if I can get. I know there was a letter from the Land Trust. And if I can bring it up, I can. I don't know if that was forwarded to the applicant or not, but let's see if I
I haven't seen it. I think there also may have been a letter from Wareham Fire that I haven't seen as well.
See if I can.
I have a letter from Sandy Slaven or to Mrs. Slaven from Kathleen Papalardo, Papalardo from the Wareham Land Trust on July 12.
Are you able to put that up?
I can tell.
Are you trying to put that up, Ken? The letter?
I'm trying to locate it.
Oh. She's she's on now. Hi.
Hi, Kathy Papalardo here, President of the Wareham Land Trust. I did send a letter off to the Planning Board as well as to Conservation Commission in regards to the Land Trust Board of Directors spoke about this project. And it is very hard to justify the destruction of, I will call it somewhat virgin forest in the interest of the environment, when the environment you're destroying is destroyed forever. And your solar project is our planned for 20 years, which is already in your plans, the cost of taking it down and disposing of everything. The forest will not be back in 20 years, nor will the animals that were living there. I don't know that anyone has done a natural heritage endangered species in depth. I know you said there weren't any there and it was not applicable, but I doubt that. I know there are box turtles in that area. Unfortunately, a lot of people who see the box turtles don't document them. We do, and I'm here with Nancy McHale, the Wareham Land Trust Treasurer, who's also a board member. We believe in solar. I think solar is great, but solar has to be sited properly. It needs to go on land that's already been disturbed, destroyed. You need to put it on top of the malls. You need to put parking lots, make them covered. You need to put it in defunct cranberry bogs. Or they can, and or they are doing experiments, I believe, in the state of Massachusetts where some cranberry growers, in the interest of keeping their bogs going with the economy, are also experimenting with putting cranberry ba, excuse me, solar panels over their bogs so they can get income from that as well as from their cranberries, which will help in the off years. But to justify destroying, and I do say destroying because they will be gone. I don't know how the I'm not a hydrologist. The hydrology of the land, you're talking removing a lot of land, especially in the, I believe it was the 140 project, you're taking out a hillside to make this work, so to speak. You have the three projects, they range from 30 something thousand pot panels, modules, I believe was the wording, to more than 50,000 modules. That's got to affect the hydrology of the area. You talk about not having permanent structures. Are these being mounted on cement pads? How big are the cement pads? The hydrology of that area will change. There's no doubt about it. Small animals, reptiles, amphibians that live there, they will move on. This is blatant destruction. The amount of carbon that you will be taking out of the atmosphere, and I know your consultant said he was working on those figures, is very hard to justify when you're saying you're putting up the solar. As Mr., I think it was As Mr., I think it was Mello, said, I might have that wrong.
Mado.
Mado, as Mr. Mado said, I believe it was Mr. Mado, said about the people of Wareham who have benefited from having these forests, whether you're looking at them and just, you know, you don't own the land, but you're benefiting from them. Those trees are benefiting all of us in regards to climate change. Your solar project is not going to benefit Wareham people directly. We're still going to be paying for energy. You're not going to replace those trees. The vegetation you're going to allow to come back is not going to be trees which are sequestering and storing carbon. I don't see how this benefits Wareham. The majority of land that you said Makepeace put into conservation was put into conservation as a requirement for several of their housing projects where they wanted to put in cluster housing. It wasn't necessarily done because they were being a good guy. They had to do some of those. And several of those projects, they're not benefiting Wareham anyway, as you stated, they're in Plymouth. I don't see a benefit to us building out so close to the water, keeping at the minimum buffers, you're getting every square inch of solar module you can onto that land. We voted on it. The board is opposed to this project on those grounds. Put it someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Nancy McHale, and I'm speaking for myself. You can take it for what it's worth. I think that the the project at 27 Charge Pond Road being right in the middle of Wareham is particularly onerous. Okay, that that particular project that has to be gerrymandered around wetlands and vernal pools and the edge of the baseball fields and so close to a very high-traffic area of Cranberry Highway, very, very visible from the Y, and so close to the water source for the Wareham River, et cetera, and the the natural herring that run up Parker's Mill. So and all of the the other seagoing animals there. I just think that that one is particularly onerous. Speaking for myself, the other large projects totally seem to cut down any sort of wildlife corridor that has been there for for generations. Makepeace, in many cases, has been an extremely good steward of the land, and the Land Trust recognizes that. There's not a problem with their past stewardship. We just think that to to allow these projects to go forward at this magnitude without any sort of mitigation at all being proposed is just unconscionable. I'm sorry, that's my personal opinion.
Jim Manese, I'd like to be heard if it's a possibility.
Yep, go ahead.
Cranberry Highway. I'm just going to follow up on the previous speakers and I think I I think in agreement with some of the speakers from the planning board, on 27 Charge Pond Road, I think someone indicated minimal distances. And and that's the key. That's a minimal distance. And the vernal pools supporting the amphibians and whatnot that utilize those pools for the breeding purposes, they don't live just within 100 feet. So if you're going to remove all the natural vegetation and understory, I mean, you're basically, you're going to leave the pools alone, but you're going to destroy the habitat these invertible, the amphibians are going to need to survive. So really need to consider reducing the size of array and something like that to be less impactful on the environment. Plus, when you're looking at the edge of a butter's to this, you're saying, well, there isn't anything there from the road to where the solar array is, but someone else owns part of that property. So how is the impact of the array going to affect the property value of the butter? And it's not just AD Makepeace or Borrego. So I I would think that it's going to reduce the property value if they wanted to say sell that to get revenues for other projects. They're going to be limited. Now, moving on to, I guess it would be 140 and 150 Tahona. And and also for all the projects, you asked about a waiver about trees and forestation. Couldn't a forest to come in and give a good estimate of the standing footage of, say, white pine trees on all the properties, you know, based upon the general age and and size of trees within a sample area of 20, 20 sites within each each site, you know, 20 spots, random spots within the sites. I mean, that's not, it's not rocket science. Something can be done. How many board foot of timber are going to come out of there? What's going to happen with that board foot of timber? Site, you know, sightlines, I have to agree, I don't know what the elevation of the trees are going to be left standing in relation to the solar array at I think it would be the southern portion, I don't know if that's 140 of the two that are being put together, 140, 150. Very steep gradients there. How much material is actually going to be removed? And if this project wasn't going there, would any material be removed to the magnitude that it's going to be removed at this point in time? How much of that material is AD Makepeace going to use specifically for their agricultural endeavors related to cranberry? I don't believe that is 61A property. That property is not under farming and or forestation at this point in time. And if you weren't doing that project, I doubt if they'd be removing the material from there. And and that's on both of them. And I also went for the project that you did at I think it was 160, which you called the, what is it, the northeast project, which had already been permitted and partially built out. I mean, you pulled a lot of material out of there, and I see a lot of trucks leaving town from out of there. I I live on 28, so I see them go by my house. I went up there and watched them from the village coming out of Tahona Road. They've shifted from there now to their project that they're doing over in Carver across from the landfill. But I'm not against solar. I think better choices of of land where you don't have a gradient, what's that go, from 49 feet to 100 feet over 150 foot of distance? I mean, for elevation over, you know, rise over run, it's it's pretty steep along that pond. How much material are you moving? Are you removing? And would it have to be done if you weren't putting a solar field in there, a solar array in there? Would it be done? And when we talked about mitigation and land set aside, as a previous speaker had noted, that had to do with projects that they wanted to get done in Plymouth primarily, I think with the Redbrook. Is that the Redbrook projects I did up there? And so there were deals gotten, some of the land was in Wareham, and just because it met the needs of the Commonwealth and also for AD Makepeace, the location of it related to other properties where it's had conservation restrictions on them, so it was a larger contiguous block. But what is the, what is a set aside for these large solar arrays that are going in now? Not what happened 10 years ago, but what are going in now? I think the east solar with 76 acres, what's the total acreage of these three projects? What's the set aside on that? Again, looking at the conservation value, the minimum, the 100 foot is a minimum. And I I think that's more, in my own opinion, to reflect on smaller projects. And I think it could do better. So and and after this, after the project is completed, is there an as-built plan presented so to accurately accurately detail exactly how much material has been removed and to where it's been brought and located to? And or? I guess that about covers it. Let me take a quick look at my notes I took while you you were presenting. I guess that's all for now. Thank you.
Anyone else out there that wishes to comment? Not hearing anything. I.
I have a request real quick, George. Stacy?
Yes.
I found the map with the diagram I really liked for 27. Ken, you shared the similar map that showed the arrays very clearly and where they were for 140, 150. Can you either show those again and let me grab a screenshot or email those to Ken and have him distribute them?
Sure. Yep, I'm happy to. I do think they may be updated based on the earlier conversation and Zach's indication that we'll take another look at those two sites, but I'm happy to email them to Ken.
Yeah, those are helpful. I drove up, I did drive up through there and it wasn't really clear to me where things were, and those will be incredibly helpful in preparation for the next meeting.
Sure.
I'm thinking that I'm not seeing it here. I thought you would, I thought Ken had sent us something earlier, but it's.
It wouldn't have been those two site context exhibits for 140 and 150.
I guess I need a little work on opening those, Ken.
Don't feel bad, George. Those site plan documents, I mean, they're they're huge. It takes, I went right by it on the 27 one, so.
Now I've got to get back to my meeting. There you are. So you are going to look at your existing plans to see if you can provide more buffering from residential use?
Yep, we'll we'll take a look at the plans for the earlier discussion, and then I think one of the other outstanding items is obviously Mr. Rowley is conducting a peer review, I understand. I'm not sure, you know, what his estimated timing is for that.
Also, if you have those numbers on how this is, how you equate solar fields to forestry, that would be helpful.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, one other item that came up, I'm looking through my notes here, is that we're going to send out a forester. I believe it was the third person who spoke requested that information. So we'll send a forester out to the site. And I think with the information I can get from the forester, I can put together what I, what would be a potential mitigation plan. I brought I brought some ideas up at the Conservation Commission meeting when the same comment or similar comment was made. So I think with first us taking another look at some of the buffering areas to to make sure we can we can try and do a little better is the first step. I think the second being providing some calculations for green kilowatt hour production to kind of equate that to more understandable units. And the third one, as I just mentioned, was the some forestry work for for you all. One request that that I would make is this forum, obviously the Zoom meeting is not what anyone wants, but it's a little bit challenging for us to work with some of the neighbors. So for the three people who spoke, my contact information is with the Wareham Planning Board. I didn't get all your information, but I'm available to talk and go over the plans in more detail and whatever I can do to take input from neighbors, from interested residents of the town. Makepeace is a great steward of the land they hold, and I've tried to be a great partner of for Makepeace with the town for the decade that I've been working on projects here, and I'm really open to making these projects the highest net benefit they can produce. And I want to make sure you guys know that that my email, my phone, whatever it may be, is open to continue the conversation.
Very good. Ken, any feedback from Charlie when his review would be complete?
No, I did not get an ETA for his report.
I need some, I need some help here. What's a peer review? And what, can I get some color around what Charlie's doing?
Go ahead, Ken.
There's a program under state law called 53G that allows the use of the proponents' funds to hire an engineer to review the engineer's work for the applicant. It's a peer-to-peer, engineer-to-engineer review of the of the project.
Basically, Richard is reviewing the drainage calculations and grading and and the technical aspects of this structure being placed.
Good to know. Okay, I look forward to seeing that.
If there's nothing further this evening, I'd look for a continuance. The first meeting in August be sufficient, do you think, or?
August 10th.
Would that give us enough time to get the info required?
It would, yeah.
So I would look for a motion to continue to August 10th.
So moved?
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did I hear everybody?
Aye.
Thank you. So moved. Thank you, Stacy, for your presentation.
Thank you all very much for your time tonight.
Thank you all. Have a nice evening.
All right. And the next item of business is a definitive subdivision plan for Antonellus on Old Onset Road?
The engineer has asked for a continuance of that, of that, of this hearing until later date.
Anyone in particular, the 10th, how much time they need, Ken? Bring enough for all of us out?
He never shares. Hey, while Ken, while Ken's looking at that, I'm going to share my screen real quick. Can someone tell me, this is the, this is the the map for the, for Old Onset Road. It is this is Old Onset right here. It's called out as Lot B in a very, I don't know where Lot B is. I see a Lot A.
It's the 1057 C1, the giant five-and-a-half acre.
I think it's that piece right there where you pointed.
Yep. 107.
Right here?
Yeah. Pretty sure it's that one.
That's correct. That's the one. And there was not a specific date that they asked for an extension to. Just that they weren't going to be ready for tonight. So I guess you would put them on to the next planning board meeting, which is the 27th of this month.
I missed a meeting in my head there. I don't know if Borrego wanted to come in on the 27th. Anyway, I look for a motion to continue.
So moved?
Wait a minute, this is we did, we haven't opened the public hearing on this yet, right?
No, you haven't.
So we'll have to open it and then continue.
So I'll make a motion to open a public here, public hearing on the definitive subdivision plan for Old Onset Road, map 14 Lot B.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by.
Second.
Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion to continue to the 27th, right?
So, so moved?
Have a second.
Michael's second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Next item was proposed zoning changes for town meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Did you have a list, Ken?
I, I believe I sent a list around. If I didn't. Then bring it up now.
Well, it's a easy for me to ask you to bring it up than me to try and do.
So I have six items on the possible zoning for a fall town meeting. One is redraft of the downtown village, WV1. The second one is the hospitality, recreation and entertainment district that is being proposed by the proponents of the racetrack. The Board of Appeals has proposed allowing drive-throughs in the CS District. The Smithers Vincent Laboratory on Main Street beside the Deacon School is looking for a lifting of state restrictions on setbacks. So they could petition for a cannabis testing lab as part of their functions there.
Is that a legislative action?
No, it's not. It's a local action, a zoning change. It's a state regulation that that's you can modify by local action. We have the floodplains and we have the sign, Article 11 signs that following the recommendations of the Attorney General to make it consistent with the Supreme Court case. That affected zone zoning bylaws across the country.
One thing that occurred to me, Ken, was do we have to continue our moratorium on cannabis onsite combustion? Consumption?
Or combustion. Either one would be right.
Yep.
Ken, that'd be another one we could put on the list. I don't know if it's necessary because there's a lot of control you have anyway to say yes or no.
Well, that's what we thought last time when we get.
What is the total number for cannabis sites in the town currently? And what is the, the, the cap?
I don't think we ever established a limit for medicinal, but we've limited recreational to three sites.
And what is that compared to other towns, say, in the Upper Cape area and Plymouth area? I would say that we're most. You know, where the gateway to Cape Cod, but you know, what would work for us before we have all types of applications streaming into Wareham? To mitigate the impact of the change that we're facing.
I have a list of the cannabis businesses. There are about eight of them. I can send that out as a list of who they are, where they're located and what they're doing. As George said, we have, we didn't put a limit on medical, but except there's only one place in town that it can take place, which is in the institutional district and not within 500 feet of a school. So essentially, Veralife where it is, is the only, only location for medical. Recreation, we said that it was, we allow three of them, which state law allows us to do as a, and as a 20% of the liquor licenses that we issue in the town.
And those licenses are all granted, right, Ken?
And those are all granted. They're not being used. The only one that's being operational is Veralife at this time.
As, as would the liquor licenses, can these be revoked for non-use, for not being active?
That's something we've discussed, but the part of the problem is the the slowness at the state level for advancing permits. So this, it's not the fault of the applicants that we've said okay to. It's the permitting process at the state level. It's, it's been, it seems to drag on forever. The other marijuana uses that are licensed, that can be licensed by town are delivery, growing, production and testing lab. And this particular one right now is a testing lab that or I don't know if you're aware of Smithers Vincent, but they're a a world-class organization that specializes in laboratory testing for environmental purposes. And they saw an opportunity for the cannabis testing lab that that they wanted to take advantage of. But the problem is that they have a state regulation that says there's a 500-foot separation between cannabis businesses and schools. And Deacon School is still active. Even though the, the lab is, is ongoing and active. They can't add the license for the testing lab until they've got, gotten a, either the school closes or they get relieved for a buy zoning.
Is the 500-foot buffer a state or a town law?
State, it's a state regulation.
So that would be the floor, the minimum. And we, are we allowed to vote a further distance? If we choose to?
Yes, if you choose to, yes. You could do longer.
And, but, but your proposal is, is that we do less, to be clear?
That's correct.
And we, so we can override the state regulation, which we've, we've done before, right?
That's right.
What's the current setback in the town for the sale of alcohol near schools buffer?
I don't know.
Have to look that up. George, just so, just so you know, I, I would like to have 10 minutes to go through the Wareham Village redraft proposal that the WRA is working on. I'd like to get the planning board up to speed as quickly as I can in terms of where we're trying to go.
All right, as far as the zoning proposals for town meeting, is there anything further you wish to see? You wish to attempt in one meeting?
This is a lot.
It's, it's.
It is, yeah.
Yep.
What's the deadline for having the?
Public hearing?
Issues submitted.
I don't know yet what the schedule is going to be for a town meeting articles. It hasn't been, it hasn't been decided yet.
I, in terms of a timeline, Ken?
Yeah.
I believe, don't quote me on this, town meeting is October 26th and the deadline for a special town meeting warrant is October 5th. Is that what you are asking, George?
Well, I wouldn't think in special town meeting. I was thinking the fall town meeting is, as a longer timeframe generally.
That's, that, that would be for the fall 2020 special town meeting warrant as opposed to the regular town meeting warrant.
I think what we want to do is have a public hearing in August on all the articles we want to take forward.
I am proposing in my timeline for the Wareham. For the Wareham Village re-zoning a public workshop August 6th.
Yeah, but we have to have a formal public hearing as well. So that's the.
No, that's a, that's a formal one. The planning board public hearing?
On the August 6th?
Yeah.
That's a Thursday, if that's all right with the board.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. August, Monday, August 10th. I don't care. I mean, anytime in August is fine. I.
The sooner the better, though. So the 10th is the preferred date.
Well. That's only a couple of weeks out.
It's, it's a month away.
Almost a month away.
It might be a busy meeting, George. Is that what you just rescheduled Borrego for?
Yeah.
I, I got a feeling that subject's been too long. Quite a bit of time. I don't think that one's gonna, gonna just slide through. It might be a might be a matter of time management, having two big discussions like that at the same night.
Is your proposal for the Wareham Village one, is that ready to go? Is it in a town meeting ready format?
That meeting format, but I think it's ready to have a hearing on.
I'd like, I'd like to share it with you if we have time. It'll, I can go very quickly. I want to give people a drift of it. I mean, a sense of what we're talking about. I'll share PDF of it with everybody. This is the, this is some work that WRA has been doing, but I think that the planning board should be working hand in hand with the WRA on something like this. So if I could have 10 minutes at the most, let me know. And just so you know, I'm, I'm also, I'm scheduling town leadership workshops. This month I'll be scheduling public workshops in, in July and August as well. And we'll be having a, a planning board public hearing on this, so. People are going to be hearing about this very quickly and I think it's important that the planning board be up to speed.
Are you looking for anything more on the other articles, Ken?
No. Just the expectation that you're going to be going through these at the, at the hearings in August and Mike's, on Mike's point, it may be appropriate that you think about another another meeting time. Another, another Monday in between.
The hospitality and entertainment district zoning proposal is going to be a significant amount of work.
Would the board want to schedule a off Monday to accomplish the town meeting article hearing?
That kind of makes sense.
Makes sense to me, George. Have, have people on the board, have, have any of you seen any drafts or any information at all about the hospitality and entertainment district zoning?
I haven't seen anything.
Michael?
Send that out for this.
This is significant. George, I think it's a very good idea to schedule an off, an off-cycle Monday meeting in August. Why don't we do the 3rd, maybe even the 17th as well? Schedule them both tentatively and if we need the second one, we'll have it.
Shoot for the 3rd? Does that work for everyone?
I think that's good.
Yeah, it's good with me.
I work with the timing on the public notice.
Yeah.
I won't be able to have a public notice until next, next Thursday, the 23rd.
And how much time do you need, Ken?
Two weeks.
Between getting them in a finished format and then advertising them, probably the 17th is more realistic, isn't it?
Yes.
Let's see if we can get a little bit of work done on the 10th and then if we have, we put it on the agenda, put something on the agenda in addition to the solar stuff on the 10th. And if we have to postpone it to the 17th, we will, but let's try to get as much done as we can on the 10th and then pick up the rest on the 17th.
Well, I think as far as working with the board to tweak this a little bit, we may be able to do that on the 27th as an agenda item.
20?
There's the next meeting in two weeks.
Okay, okay. We have a lot of work to do. And we need to be due diligent here.
Let's have a workshop on the 27th and the public hearing on the 17th.
It sounds like a plan.
With, the work we can do on the 10th is available as well.
So the workshop is the 20, what did you say, Ken?
27th, two weeks.
And public hearing?
On the 17th.
And you're going to put what articles on a public hearing on the 17th? All six?
I, I may not put the floodplain article on because I'm not sure about FEMA requirements at this time. So we'll have five on there. Wareham Village, the casino, racetrack, drive-throughs, setbacks for marijuana testing lab and the Article 11 sign bylaw.
Would it be worth putting the FEMA on just in case?
It may be a, a good insurance policy.
Just, just a question. Didn't we go, the signage and the FEMA didn't, we were all set to go for the spring town meeting. We have to redo it?
Yeah, we have to redo it because it's been 60, more than 60.
The FEMA didn't take place because we didn't have a town meeting within the timeframe, so FEMA withdrew it.
Okay.
Is the 27th the workshop? For, is, so we're going to discuss and workshop on the 27th?
All right.
All right. Is that 6 o'clock usually start?
Yes.
The board, if you want to do six.
Work for everybody? Yeah.
Okay.
You good on that, Ken?
Yeah, good on that.
Are you still typing?
So we'll have, the, the 17th will be the when we actually have the formal public hearing.
Correct. I didn't get.
Time, start time on the 17th? Do we know?
Six.
We'll try 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock always at meetings.
Okay.
French fries must have been good. He's spinning around.
Can I go through the, the village proposal, George?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna go, try to go very quickly, all right? Oops, that didn't work. I don't know how to do this with Zoom. We're gonna do it this way. Are people there? Can you, can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, did you see the zoning strategy proposal one here?
Mm-hmm.
With the picture?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna go quick. Um, we've been working for quite a while and done a lot of research and had some people come and, and do a lot of work on our behalf. To look at, um. What we need to do in, in the town specifically around Wareham Village. And to be clear, we're talking specifically about Wareham Village Zone 1. Which is in the tan area here, not WV2 in the green up on High Street. Um, why are we focusing on Wareham Village? And the bottom line is that there are. Five specific strategies called out in our master plan. To go, uh, do things to improve Wareham Village. Our Wareham Economic Development Strategy that we published in March of 2019. Calls out very clearly that Wareham Village reflect underwhelming investments in building upgrades, keep, with key vacancies, derelict buildings, and empty lot. Um, but tons of opportunity to do better there. Um, why Wareham Village? We had recently in February, the Urban Land Institute came in with a technical, technical advisory panel. And made a very telling statement for me, and it said, although, I want to read this, there are many worthy redevelopment projects being considered in Wareham. The redevelopment of Wareham Village should be the priority. A successful reimagining of Main Street, Merchant's Way could be the corner, or can be the cornerstone to the revitalization of Wareham Village. And Wareham as a whole. So currently. Um. The current WV1 zoning goals, and this is in the zoning bylaws, it's section 211 dot 2. Uh, you can read this for yourself, but I, I find it a little contradictory within itself. The green are the things that we think need to be done. Um, the red kind of conflict with that in terms of, uh, preserve, preserving historic buildings and refoster, and fostering reuse of existing buildings. We've been. Focused on that strategy pretty heavy, um, for quite a while, and I don't think it's working very well. What we do. Want to preserve our historic character, and we want to promote small-scale business. But we also want to promote compact mixed-use development. And utilize the beautiful waterfront that's there. So in our current zoning regulations, it calls out mixed-use development. Let's talk about what that is. Mixed-use zoning is horizontal and vertical combination of land use in a given area. More clearly. Is putting. Retail, commercial, office, residential, cultural, institutional, entertainment. And even light manufacturing in one spot. To create a single environment. Where people can live, work, and play all in one spot. Including having outdoor spaces and plazas and parks incorporated, making a all-encompassing place to live, work, and play. Why should we do this? Um. Because if a developer wanted to come in and do this now, he would have significant zoning challenges based on our current regulations. Developers are reluctant to go into development projects when they know they have that many conflicts that they'd have to get through. And mixed-use zoning has been clearly demonstrated to work all across the country. To help revive communities and neighborhoods that haven't kept up. There's some bullet, there's five bullets here from the Economic Development Strategy that, that clearly call out what we should do. It's all around mixed use. The ULI tap report. Calls out very clearly. Increasing density. Uh, mixed-use development. Merchant's Way development. Public realm improvements. So what we're talking about here are some zoning changes. Zoning changes to principal use, minimum lot area, frontage and setback height, building coverage, impervious surface coverage. Updates to our design standards and our parking standards, and considering air rights over town land regulations. I'll talk specifically click to those. Where we are right now, this is just draft. And I will share all of this, this presentation with all of you in, in a PDF, and it'll be labeled draft because these are not final. We're working through these. Um, gonna change some things. Uh, the green is the old. The red is, I mean, I'm sorry. The first column here is what it is presently. In terms of principal use, and the new column is what we wanted, what we propose it to be going forward. Green is, is yes, red is no. Um, you can see the three to four family dwellings. Five-plus family dwellings are now called for SPZ. We're saying those are in there. Uh, you can see some of the uses here, some of the commercial use changes. I'll let you look at this on your own. We should also look very heavily at, or very, very clearly at when we want site plan review on this type of stuff. I think we want to do it all the time. Some of the real key changes are around the density and dimensional regulations. Um, these are the showstoppers in terms of putting in, uh. Um, multiple residential units on the third and fourth floor of a building. I'll let you look at these on your own. Uh, existing, these are the existing design standards are very vague. And we're talking about putting in, um, even more detail, and we've reached out to some people that have. Uh, a lot of experience in this and want to get even more detail. And when, you keep in mind, when I'm sharing all this with you. When you have an opportunity to look at it, we're very, very interested in your feedback. And your input. Um, these are some parking regulation updates. It's basically, uh, reducing the amount of parking spaces that would be required. And air rights over town property, this is really interesting. If you look at the back of the buildings that are on Main Street, uh, the one, and over Merchant's Way. One of the ideas that's always been thrown up is can we develop over Merchant's Way, put parking spaces on Merchant's Way in the flood zone, but have all the. The retail, commercial, and residential development above. That, uh, getting out of the flood zone. It would look something like this diagram here. But that would require air rights over town lawn property. So where we're going with this is, um, conduct information sharing meetings, and this is actually the very first one that we're doing here at the planning board tonight. And I'm speaking now as a WRA member. Um. I sent out invitations to every agency in town today. Asking those chairpeople to share that invite with every member on their agency. Um, to attend two Zoom meetings that have been scheduled for the 21st and the 23rd of this month, where I will present this presentation and it's. In the state that it's in at that point. Then after that, we're going to hold two public workshops. Uh, focusing on the, uh, village property owners and the Wareham Village Association and the Wareham citizens themselves. We'll have workshops within the WRA based on all that feedback. We'll have a public hearing with the planning board. Um, we need to come up with a finalization on how we do this. Do we do it with a Wareham Village overlay district zone? Or do we update the current zoning laws for WV1? And we need to understand site plan review requirements. Um, then going into the fall 2020 town meeting, um, execute a marketing campaign to make sure everyone understands exactly what the issue is they'll be. Seeing and voting on, and do that submission for the town meeting. The timeline that I referenced earlier looks like this. We're back here right now. Uh, the town leadership presentations are July 21 and 23. Those are scheduled. Doing a public workshop on the 30th and August 6th. Uh, I'm gonna move this August 10th. Public hearing to August 17th. The WRA will use all that feedback to tune this up. Will submit an article for the town meeting. Here or on the regular warrant, which is, uh, prior to, uh, it'd be in September, I think. And then execute on the October 26th fall town meeting. Um, real quickly to give you some ideas, this is some examples of what mixed use looks like in other cities. You can see here, there's retail on the first floor. Commercial on the second floor in this example, and residential on the third and fourth floor here. There's another example of it. Um. I'm just gonna quickly show you these. But you'll, you see they're all four stories. They can be up to five. Our, our current zoning wouldn't allow this. This is some mixed-use examples on the outdoor aspect of, uh, mixed use. With outdoor dining. Um, some ideas around what we could do at Merchant's Row. Uh, pedestrian pathways and urban furniture outside. And then in the PDF I send you, um, I'll have all the existing WV1 and WV2 zoning. That you can see that as it is right now. This is just reference material, and if you go back to the, um, we go back to the. Changes here, you can see a little more context. Uh, because in the use section, the use section is five pages of, of uses. I'm only showing the ones that we're currently contemplating. Um, the dimension and density regulations are everything. The design standards are everything that's in there. So, um. I know it's an awful lot. I went through it very quickly. Um, if there's any questions, uh, please reach out. Uh, Ken's familiar with this. You reach out to he or I. Um, I will send this to you all tonight or tomorrow morning, so you have it. Um, I would hope that you take a little bit of time, look at it, be prepared for it, for the workshop. Um. I'll take any questions now, but. Um. I, I guess that's all I got for right now.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome. I hope that made some sense.
Yeah, once you get all the marketing out of the way.
That's, you know, that's, that's how I roll. You know that, right?
Uh, anything else this evening?
Russell, I need, I need your email address.
RJ.
Yeah.
M O T T O. Seven, just the number, at AOL.com.
Okey-dokey, thank you.
Got it.
Ken, you're still in work.
I got the cock set up in the back here.
How come there's two of you on my screen?
One, one computer has the, uh, runs the, uh, uh. The meeting and the other gives me the audio visual.
Oh, okay. So you're going to distribute the hospit, hospitality and entertainment, uh, draft?
Yes.
To this board, okay, good.
All right, well, if there's nothing further, I guess, uh. We can call it a night if someone would care to make a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:54.